Councilmember Oparano.
Here.
Councilmember Burnworth.
Here.
Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Eugenio. Mayor Protem Dale.
Here.
Let the record reflect, Mayor Eugenio has joined virtually, and her mic was not working, but she is, she is here on the screen.
Okay, please stand for pledge allegiance. Loper, would you do honors, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
All right, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor Protem, there are no adjustments to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holbrook, any announcements of action taken in closed session?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I have no reportable action to report.
Thank you. Okay. C1 matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. And at that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to council in writing. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Jernigan. I had a thousand rodeo drive here in Imperial. I'd like to refer to an article in the newspaper on October the 8th, 2021, local Imperial Valley Press, which are upper up. I don't know. Thank you. Was concerned about the traffic congestion on Highway 86 and 15, 15th Street. And I think the city made a report that they're conducting traffic studies. This has been percolating since November of last year. And I'd just like to question what the status is of those studies and where they're going to come to fruition. I don't know if anybody's been out there, 7:30 in the morning, it's a nightmare. Somebody's gonna get killed, there's gonna be a serious accident out there or serious vehicle damage. It's an absolute nightmare. I want to know what we're doing and what the timeline is on it. And excuse me, please don't wrap it into this overall futuristic idea we're doing on Highway 86. This is a specific problem that we need to deal with now. And I know that you voted against this, Ms. Burnsworth, on the planning commission to waive the traffic study, which was an absolute mistake. So I would like some response where we're at, when it's gonna come to fruition, and what the timeline is.
Mr. Jernigan, Dennis Marita, City Manager. Indeed, part of the answer does involve the bigger picture on Highway 86. With, with respect to the current issue at 15th Street, as you know, the, the post office is open, but none, the, the other two businesses, which I really think are the concern about the traffic, are, are not yet open. What, what we see there now is, is generated by the school. That, that issue was there before any project was envisioned at 15th Street. So I, but I think the school and certainly the city recognize that there is an existing issue. As of now, what you see is the plan to handle the traffic, and that is there's a, there's a right turn. As you're heading west on 15th, there'll be a right turn into the project short of Imperial Avenue, and then there'll be a, and there's a right turn pocket for Imperial. Currently, that, that is the additional improvement that's happening along 15th Street, but.
Excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt you because I'll lose what you're saying. Are you suggesting that there's going to be a turn lane coming off 86 into 15th Street on a right turn, a pocket there?
It, it, no, no additional turning lanes on 86, on 86. When, if you turn left onto 15th from 86, there'll be a, there's a dedicated right turn lane that will be there. Now, and I understand the school has also implemented some measures in terms of drop-off points that, that are designed to ease that traffic issue. But obviously, we have what we have, and, and there are things that need to be, that, that, that will need to be addressed if, if indeed it turns out, as, as we can all speculate, but I think it's probably not unreasonable to expect that, that the presence of a Starbucks, presence of McDonald's at that time of the morning is gonna not, is gonna add to the already existing traffic issues. So we're, we're obviously aware of that. And, and, and I, I think some interim things will have to be done.
Like what?
The bigger, whatever it is now, we have, we have a, a police officer that, our, our school resource officer that is, that is assisting. What, what the observation was is that the school has a crossing guard, and, and, and some things can be done to assist the crossing guard to help the traffic move in terms of moving the students and moving the cars.
I, I go by there every morning to the post office. I've seen a police officer there one time, that's when they had the demonstrators out there last week. Every day, I do not see a police officer out there directing traffic. The crossing guard, to her, she's doing the best job that she can. But the traffic coming out of, off Imperial Avenue and going back east to the intersection, the sun is in their face and they can't see anything. I would suggest as a remedy right now that you could incorporate a signal, a designated light at that intersection for northbound traffic and coming west on 15th Street for southbound traffic. Control the intersection with green arrows, because right now, it's a hodgepodge out there. I don't know, has any, any of you guys been out there at 7:30 in the morning? Clearly, you haven't.
I, I go there probably before 7:30 because I go to the post office.
I used to see you at the post office every morning.
So that's, when you, whenever, whatever time it was you saw me, it's probably about the time I'm there daily. It's, obviously, I'm there before the traffic that you're describing because I don't experience what you're talking about. I've seen it, of course.
For those of you who know, don't know me, I, I hardly ever use the word emergency or critical mass. But folks, you're at critical mass there. And I, and I will be down here when somebody gets hurt and pointing my finger at you and say, I told you so. I know that's petty, but you need to do something, whether you assign a full-time officer out there to control it, put one on 86, but you can't ignore this problem. And the psychobabble of we're gonna do this, we're gonna put this in Imperial, is not gonna work. I'm telling you, you got a critical mass out there, and I see everybody shaking their heads. We need to do something about it. And if you haven't been down there, I suggest that you go down there tomorrow morning and park and watch this menagerie. It's a mess.
You, you mentioned something about the signal light that's on 86 that controls left turn movement. One of the things that is happening is that the city is in the process of acquiring some equipment that will assist with the timing of those lights. Now, if, 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 I'm, I'm happy to get together with you because I'm not sure.
But to exacerbate the situation, last week, the signal lights were flashing red for three days. I saw traffic backed up on 86 from 15th Street to Nickel Road. And that's when people are coming to work from Brawley to El Centro, and they're driving crazy. Some kid's gonna get hurt, I'm telling you.
I, I was, I'll say that as I was indicating, I'm happy to meet with you to kinda, because I'm not sure I followed when you were talking about the green arrows. But I'm happy to meet with you to, to.
Dennis, they have one at Circle K on Imperial Avenue and Ayton Road, right here at Circle K. When you go, you're going eastbound from Circle, the old Circle K, there's a signal light that controls the northbound traffic. When you're going westbound, there's a signal light that controls the southbound traffic. It allows the north and southbound traffic to go. That doesn't happen at 15th Street. It's whoever gets there first and gets in front of you crosses the intersection first. There's no signal control in that, that, that traffic pattern out there. Is everybody familiar with that?
Left turn yield.
Pardon me?
It's a left turn yield.
Left turn yield, exactly. And, you know, I don't know, there's already a signal light probably for a couple, five, 10 Gs, grand or whatever it is, you could put one of those in there. And it would reduce some of the problem. But what we're doing now is just procrastinating, literally kicking the can down the road. Back to my original question, when is this study going to be done? We've been looking at it for 12 months.
Well, I thi, I think the study that, that we're referring to is the one that, that you referenced as being part of the bigger project.
I'll, I'll quote Mrs. Alexis Brown. In response to the Anaparo's question, Assistant City Manager Alexis Brown explained that the city has conducted, has conducted implying a past tense, traffic studies at intersections along Highway 86 for blueprint for Highway 86. Again, further on to the article, she again refers to the study, so it says, has been conducted. So that implies to me it's in the past. Is it, is it done?
I can, I can address that. We have completed that portion of the traffic survey with specific attention to 15th and 86 because of the issue that you were referencing. Obviously, that was a focus area that the council had referred to. So yes, we have not been in receipt of the collection yet because it is for the entirety of 86. So we have completed that. We have almost completed the Imperial Avenue. If you drive on Imperial Avenue from 86, you'll see them on the different intersections as well. We're also incorporating that on.
Excuse me, excuse me for interrupting, I apologize. You implied that that section of the study is done, but they're withholding that until the entire study is completed.
The entire study is for the entirety of 86.
But they will not release this portion yet.
We will review the study at the completion of the project, yes, of that portion of the studies in the project.
Has anybody ever heard of the seven Ps? I have this hanging in my office, proper prior planning, piss, piss, poor performance. Clearly, we've dropped the ball on this. Why can't we look at the study specifically addressing 86 and 15th Street and have to wait six, seven months until the rest is done?
We're not, we're not talking six, seven months. We are talking before the end of the year that that study will be completed, that portion. There's many studies in association with the Highway 86 project you're referring to, the traffic studies specifically, the traffic engineer will complete that report, and we anticipate to have that before the end of this year.
Do you folks accept that? I, I, I just, I can't put my hands around that, no offense, ma'am. But this has gone on a year, and the engineers that you're paying haven't completed the study for the commission to look at, the council to look at?
A year?
This project has been going on, percolated since November of last year when they had the planning commissions, and then they sold the property out there in December or January.
That, this study is not in conjunction with the sale or development of that property. It's completely independent, and it was only conducted starting two months ago.
That's why I see the, the problem, is the city should have been on top of this thing 11 months ago. Because everybody knew, and Mrs. Burnsworth was one of them on the planning commission, that knew this was gonna be an issue. It's coming home to roost with us, we need to do something on it. And you're suggesting the study will be done in a year? Can you possibly, or excuse me, two months? Can you possibly tell us what's in the study relative to 15th Street and 86?
I haven't reviewed the data, so I can't tell you what's on. But I can tell you that we recognize that issue, which is why it was a specific focus area in that study. I realize that's not the answer that you wanna hear.
Is it the answer anybody else wants to hear? Mine might be out of left field on this. You're right, though, it's not the answer I wanna hear, ma'am. Is there something more tentative that, that we can put, I can put my teeth into and I could talk to people and tell them about it? Because I'm not the only one complained about this. I'm the only stupid one that's got, can come down here at 7 o'clock at night and tell you.
Again, Mr. Jernigan, keep in mind that if that project had never been approved, that the traffic you experienced at 7:30 every morning would not be any different, right? Because I, I don't, I, I personally don't think that the traffic that's generated by the post office, which is the only business there that now that's open, is causing the issue that we see at 15th and 86.
I'll concede that.
And so, indeed, we, we can have, I'm happy to have a conversation about what we should or should not have done in connection with Starbucks and McDonald's.
Dennis, I'll concede that. And if that was, if the post office wasn't there, I'd be standing in front of the school board complaining to them right now. If it's the school board's issue, I'd be complaining to them. But now, they've transferred this mess to you guys, and it's yours.
When you say, I'm not sure what you mean by transferred, because it seems to me that it's, it, it, there are city streets involved, but the traffic is present because of the school being there. And so I, I, I see there being a solution that would involve both entities. And I'm not attempting to transfer it back to the school, but like I said, the traffic issue that we see would be there if there was no project.
So just as a timeline in my simple mind, the study will be done by the end of the year. What does it look like in the progression to implement the study? Will it be reviewed by the council for six months? Will it look at construction in nine months and fruition in a year and a half? What is the plan timeline on this?
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I can interject. We've gone well beyond what's anticipated for public comment, and we've begun a robust discussion on an, an agendized item. I would recommend, this is an important issue, but if we wish to discuss it further, I'd recommend it be brought back and agendized.
But more than, I agree. Bring your bags and agenda it, and I'll come back and talk to you again about it. Because I'm not gonna let this dog lie. This is something that's very close, very passionate in my heart, and I feel very serious about it. And I'm not, I'm not gonna let it go with a bunch of psychobabble because I'll be down here every month, every week, talking about this, because it needs to be rectified. And we just can't kick the can down the road, folks, because people's lives are in danger. Agenda it, let me know, and I'll come down. Hopefully, we could solve something, get some answers, a little more solid answers. Thank you very much.
Jernigan. Yes, sir. I said I let you go longer because it needed to be discussed, but we will do this. This council is very much on top of it. We can only go into so many things, and as many years as you've been in, involved with county business, you know some things can be discussed and some can until things are done, so.
I, I, I recognize that.
So I, I kinda feel like I'm up here on a hot seat, sitting on a, on a hot bowl. And, and I will say this, I apologize, I didn't recognize you. With this, I just didn't recognize you, so. But anyway, thank you for your concern and coming, and that's why I said I let you go longer.
And I appreciate that.
But, okay. Okay, let's move on to, and that is a rarity, folks, because I don't normally do that. But we did need to hear some of that. Okay, let's move on to matters appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand, be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name, address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. Anybody like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we're moving on to consent agenda. All items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council by one motion without discussion. Should any council member or any other person request that any item be considered separately, that item will be then taken up at, at that time and determined by the mayor.
Motion to approve.
I've got a motion by Councilman Oparano and Councilwoman Burnworth, second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oparano.
Yes.
Councilmember Burnworth.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor Eugenio. Mayor Eugenio, you're muted. Let the record reflect, that was a yes from Eugenio. Mayor Protem Dale.
Yes.
Motion carries, 5-0.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go into E action items, discussion action. This will be either approved or disapproved. E1, discussion on removal and replacement of four sanitary sewer manholes along Second Street between old SR 86 and P Street. Bid number is 2021-07.
Mr. Mayor and council, that will be presented by Mr. Mora.
Good evening, council. The item for you is the replacement of four manholes along Second Street between SR 86 and P Street. These manholes are located in the intersections of Second Street and LM and MP, as shown on the attached exhibit one as part of the, the agenda item. We received three bids, and staff recommends the project to be awarded to A and R Construction, which is the lowest responsible, and responsible bidder. We also request a 25% contingency for any, for potential unknown conditions. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Actually, I do. You wanna go, Katie?
Um, so I'm looking at the three bids here. And my concern is, so you have one at $68,000, one at 110, and then another one at $279,000. For me, I, it's just two very, usually they come in close to the same or pretty similar, like you have one that's double, and then another one that's pretty much almost triple. So I'm kinda thinking, was, how's our scope of work for that? It just doesn't, something doesn't seem right when they're that different.
Um, I mean, we, we don't have a ability to control the prices of the contractors provide. But what, what I can tell you is the A in our construction came within our engineered cost estimate. So we review all those prices from prior projects, and they're right on, 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 on the monies.
Yeah, so actually, again, you know, I did notice that, but one of my big questions is, well, there's a couple of them that I have written down here, is, I know that we're authorizing a 25% contingency opposed to a standard, what, 10% or 15% that we normally do?
10%.
Yeah, so it's, it's, we're expecting something.
There's, there's always the, the unknown. We, we're requesting 15, 25% of, instead of the 15%, because it is a main line. It is a huge main line, it's a different manhole that we're replacing. So based on our visual inspection and the term and hole on the base, so we decided not to replace it. Now, in case that we start doing the demo, and we find the, the, they're not, the basis not in good condition, then there, we have to do other things in order to replace that. You know, like a bypass and whatnot, doing it at night, you name it, because it is a main line, and P Street is.
P Street.
Yes. I mean, the other ones, we didn't, we couldn't, that's not a big issue, we replace the basis. I mean, as, as you can see here in the bit, but P Street, it is, it is unknown.
So when we, there was, I take it there was a job walk, these manholes were opened up, they were looked at, so every, every one of these people that bid knew exactly what they're getting into, except for the unknown.
Except for the unknown, correct.
So that understood, yes, there is a big difference. Number two, I know several years, and, and maybe I'm not, I'm gonna rephrase that. We just replace manhole rings? Or do we do this work too? Because I know we just bought, three years ago? We bought an attachment for one of the skip loaders to be able to replace manholes. No?
Lids and rings.
Lids and rings, okay, that's.
Not, not the shafts.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to make sure, it wasn't the same thing that I was gonna say, because this is something that we can replace ourselves, but if not, this is something that's gonna go different. So that's why it's out to bid. Besides what was seen in, in the job walk, when was the last time these were looked at? Just to see if there was anything wrong, so we don't end up like what we had on 15th and N. So I'm just looking at the anticipation, is 25% gonna be enough for our contingency? Or are we gonna come back with a change order, we're gonna be closer to that 110 or 200, 150,000?
That three manholes are the smaller, and they're down, if you will, Second Street. It's not the major trunk line, it's P Street. We believe that those will come in, they will work exactly like we've talked about, exactly like the bid will go. That is not a high-flow area. P Street is the one, and I believe P Street is why the bid come in at the price it did, and the contingency is being asked for, because we can't tell you what the bottom of that one is.
It can be like the one over on, on 15th and N, right?
If the base is good and strong, they'll, they'll, they'll shaft it. If it's not, then it's bypass and set a new base.
With this one, if it's bad to the point where we have to bypass, is this price can, in consideration with bypassing it pumps and all that other stuff, or is this separate or is that part of the contingency? With contingency?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not gonna exceed a 85,000?
I, I certainly hope not. In, in discussions internally, we, and with the contractor, they're willing to work at night when the flow is down for the bypass, and, and we'll shut down P Street all directions so that they can have unlimited access and mobility.
One thing I do gotta say that I really like to see is that there is three local companies putting up, bidding on this. That I do like. But, um, thank you, I think that's all my questions.
I'm making more.
Second.
Motion from Tucker and a second from Councilman Oparano. That's to award construction contract for A and R Construction. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tucker.
Yes.
Councilmember Burnworth.
Yes.
Mayor Eugenio.
Yes.
Councilmember Oparano.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Dale.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, now, we need to move to authorize a 25% contingency. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Oparano and second from Tucker. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Burnworth.
Yes.
Councilmember Oparano.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor Eugenio.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dale.
Yes. Okay, we move on to E2, discussion action on the essential air service at the Imperial County Airport.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem and council. As you may recall, this, this item was before you at, at your last meeting. And basically, what the Department of Transportation is requesting local jurisdictions to provide input as to who should be awarded a, a contract to provide essential air service to Imperial County. In this case, there were three proposals received. One by Boutique Airlines, one by Advanced, and one by Southern. Southern is the existing provider of essential air service. Advanced and, and Boutique both propose a different airplane and one that has, as I understand it, some onboard facilities and a pressurized cabin. But the, the proposal also includes a significant difference in terms of the requested subsidy. And, and so, and, and also with respect to the advanced proposal, it, it proposes, as I, as I recall, a proposal service through Phoenix, which would be, make it difficult to the extent, at least for us, to the extent we fly out of here locally, it's typically to get to LAX to connect to Sacramento or something along those lines. So, like I said, the, the existing service is Southern. Their, their, the request for the subsidy is significantly lower than the other two. But it's, it's, it's back before you, Mr. Dale, Mayor Protem Dale, wasn't present at the last. Dale, uh, wasn't present at the last, uh, 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 meeting when this was, uh, discussed, and so, uh, we bring it back to you for, uh, some additional, uh, consideration.
Well, I'd actually, I'd like to chime in on this again. I know the last time we talked about this is that we were, our biggest concern is that there was flights from here to, um, Phoenix, LA and Phoenix, and that was through Boutique and we know Southern is only flying from here to LA and here to Vegas.
Ten, yes, potentially here, from here to Vegas, splitting the twenty-four enplanements between both.
Now, can there be any changes with some of the other, um, uh, what do you call it? Uh, companies that can fly to Phoenix or other hubs, potentially?
Potentially, but I believe that would have to be submitted in the proposal at the time that the RFP was out for bids, so it would be if the, if it was sent out again by the Department of Transportation for consideration and response, they would be able to amend it, or when the contract came back around for re-award, they would be able to amend it at that time as well.
Sure, I'm, when you look at the, the proposals, I, I see language in all of them, which suggests some level of flexibility and, uh, and, and room for discussion. Now, how significant that, uh, that could be in terms of what ultimately gets agreed to, uh, with Department of Transportation? I, 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 I can't say, uh, but when, at least when you look at the RFPs, uh, in, in many different places in the RFP, they talk about scheduling, uh, and, and things like that. Now, whether they could, if, if a change to where they fly can be had i- in the context, uh, in that context, I'm, I, I, I don't, I'm not sure about that. Usually, you know, a, a proposal, uh, is a proposal and, and, uh, to allow a sign- significant change, at least in our world, we would have some difficulty with that, uh, to make sure it was fair for everybody, but I don't know the DOT rules in that regard.
Be on. I mean, I've never seen Boutique, so I don't know much about it. I think I just thought the pressurized cabin was a good thing. Looking at their prices, they're gonna be up in the two hundred dollar range for us to fly from here to there, to where we could fly round trip from, um, here to, uh, LA from with S- Southern for what, a hundred and fifty, a hundred bucks, was it? That we've done it before? So it is a significant cost and I also do recall that Southern does have programs for college students. Do we know if Boutique has anything like that?
Do not know.
Do not know. What other benefits do we have with going with Boutique besides a pressurized cabin and a different airplane and going to Phoenix? I mean, I don't fly to Vegas anyways.
I'm gonna chime in on this only for the reason that, that I used to be in this business.
Okay.
And the difference between a Pilatus PC twelve and a Cessna Caravan, two oh seven Caravan. The Caravan is a, is, was built and is and still will always be, along with the, there's a version called a Husky that's very similar to it. They're literally a workhorse. They can carry more weight, they can, uh, they can do a lot of things that the PC twelve can't. Um, a bathroom, no, it doesn't, but your flights are short enough that they're really, that shouldn't be an issue if you use a body beforehand. Um, I had major concerns, cause we're looking at a seven hundred thousand dollar difference between, correct? Um, that, that gap is awful big and I can tell you something, if we run into reliability issues with this, which right now, we're not even, the numbers look so good with Southern, that if we have problems with numbers of getting people into the plane because of whatever be the case, there is a good chance you can lose your EAS contract, cause you don't meet the, the threshold of the price, because what's gonna happen, they're gonna have to price that thing so far out of there in order to make it to where it works, that people won't fly it. Now, the other bomb that I'm gonna drop on this, that I had a concern on, is how many airports Boutique has been kicked out of the last few, I think the last year. So just look some of these up. The last one was in Merced, they actually left before the contract was up. So those were my concerns.
Ideally, that could happen here to us.
That could happen very well to us, but I will say the Caravan, see, I don't, early on in the, the company that I worked for before, they actually used the PC twelve, that was their model when they first started their business. They quickly got out of it because you can't haul the freight that you can with a two oh seven Caravan. So it comes down to, I don't know about you, but my wife, when she packs, she has to throw away about ten pounds at the airport because the bag is four hundred and ninety pounds and we brought it, trimmed it down to seventy, but, um, that plane can haul the weight, so. Anyway. Any other questions?
With your experience, you, you suggest Southern is still our best bet besides the seven hundred?
Absolutely, and, and one thing, I, I mean, I, I'm gonna go back to six years ago, um, I went to a symposium with all, with several different airlines, from Delta to, to, to American Airlines, um, I actually co- came in contact with some folks from, from Southern. At that time, I was not aware of where they, where their business model was from, and we spoke some, and I just found it, it was very interesting that they've, they've been around a long time. I didn't realize they're an airline that's been around a long time, so, um, that kinda came back to mind when Southern bought Mukalele, and I thought that was actually a good fit because across the country, they've done a pretty good job.
Numbers.
Any other questions, while?
Yeah, so our compensate, our, our numbers would be definitely way lower if we stick with Southern. I mean, the year one, they're only at two point nine, everybody's over at least three point three mil, so.
In part, in, in, in defense of, I believe, what would be the contract for, uh, Boutique is, when you're talking the Pilatus, you're talking a lot more money to fly that aircraft too. So there again, that, that gap of that number for a ticket is gonna cost a little bit more.
Appreciate you bringing this back.
Okay, um, well, if we have no more questions, we're gonna move right along. Do I have a motion?
Your motion would be to?
Well, it's to, um, amend the, the previous.
Well, last time I said Boutique, um, looking at the numbers a little closer right now, yeah, for, for our residents, for Imperial County, um, even when we start talking about, you know, a little over half a million dollars, it's a half a million dollar savings. I mean, I would say, um, I'd make a motion, let's go, stick with Southern.
Second.
Got a motion from Oparano and a second from Tucker, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Eugenio?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Councilmember Oparano?
Yes.
Mayor Dale, Mayor Protem Dale.
Yes, that's okay. Okay, let's, uh, move on to E three, discussion action. Uh, class one, one and class two bike facility along north side of Ayton Boulevard from Dogwood Road to Puerto Vallarta Avenue. The bid number is two zero two zero dash oh eight, uh, slash, uh, CML five one three four.
Mr. Mayor Protem and counsel, a Mr. Mora will present this item.
Um, good evening, council. The item before you is for the recently completed bike facility along Ayton Boulevard, which included the, um, asphalt curve, landscape, um, signage, and the, um, asphalt for the bike lanes. Um, as you may already know, the bike, this, this project was funded through the CMAC funds and the LTA measured. Um, final quantities have been, um, accounted in the balance and change order, and staff recommends approval of balance and change order and final contract amount, acceptance of work completed, and authorize city clerk to file a notice of completion. Um, the original contract sum was five hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollar with fifty cents, and the balance and change order is twenty-four thousand, five hundred and one dollar and sixteen cents, which represents, um, three point nine four percent, which is part of the fifteen percent, um, contingency, and the total amount including the change order is, is six hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents, sixty-six cents, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
So this is, this is just going into their contingency, or had they already spent all their contingency?
No, no, this is part of the fifteen percent contingency.
Okay.
But we're not exceeding it by three point nine?
No, no, it's not, the contract amount, fifteen percent plus three point nine, it's not, no. It is, the three point nine is within the fifteen percent contingency.
May I?
I'll make a motion of the balance of the change order.
Real quick question, if I may. The change order, it says increased bid, item number six, installed new PC driveway including class two base, subgrade preparation and reinforcing bars per construction. Why would it be a change order? Didn't they know this was gonna go in originally?
Well, if you can take a look at the, um, balance and change order attached on the exhibit, that you have, uh, the, a couple of change orders. So change order number one and number, and number two, pretty much was, it, it was a wash. Um, so the change order, the balance and change order is a change order number four, uh, which we added a little bit of concrete, uh, for the driveways, um, and the increase on the, um, the, um, the asphalt as well as, um, an irrigation line, but the irrigation line was like four hundred and seven dollars, seventy dollars.
Yes, so if I hear this right, the only reason we made this change order is to increase the capacities of what we have now to make it stronger and better than what we originally planned for.
Correct, mm-hmm. And on, and, and, on one of them, um, the, the driveways, um, we, we had specified, um, certain square footage for the driveways, but, um, talking to the owner to the north, um, he recommended to increase that, uh, the area, uh, because of the, um, act, um, equipment that goes to there, and, um, he was right. Um, right after we poured the concrete, we saw that, uh, we needed that difference.
We went within depth?
Yes.
Thought I read it right. So I'll second the motion.
I have a motion from Tucker and a second from, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Oparano?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Eugenio?
Yes, I still want more trees along that bike path, but yes.
Mayor Protem Dale?
Yes.
You're gonna get salted eaters.
Yeah. Okay, uh.
No, thank you, Robert.
Okay, uh, now I'd like to get a motion for the acceptance of work.
I'll make a motion to acceptance of work completed.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Tucker and a second from Burnworth, uh, roll call.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnworth?
Yes.
Mayor Eugenio?
Yes.
Councilmember Oparano?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dale?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve number three, authorizing city clerk to file notice of completion in Imperial County Clerk Recorder Office.
I have a motion from Tucker?
Second.
Second from Burnworth, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Burnworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Oparano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Eugenio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dale?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, uh, moving on to E four, uh, Second Street Rehabilitation and Reconstruction Project from old SR eighty-six to P Street.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor Protem and counsel, uh, Mr. Mora, uh, will, uh, be presenting this item and, and I, I believe there may also be some comment from, uh, city attorney.
Um, good evening, council. The item for you is for the Second Street Rehabilitation Reconstruction Project. Um, this project is for, um, the curving gutters, driveways, sidewalks, A D A ramps, asphalt pavings, fire hydrants, catch basins, storm drains, sewer pipelines along Second Street from SR eighty-six to P Street. Uh, we received five bids and permanent construction aggregate, um, appears to be the lowest bidder, um, in the amount of one million, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and zero, and six cents. Um, due to the potential unknown conditions, it is also recommended to add the fifteen percent contingency to this contract, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
I may add a, a few comments. On Monday, uh, city staff received a bid protest letter from Rove Engineering, uh, related to an issue with the bid package. That issue was, um, although the, the bid documents noted the requirements of, uh, DBE, or DBE requirements, a, uh, the, the attachment was not part of the bid package. This attachment is exhibit fifteen dash G, local agency bidder, DBE commitment form, it's a standard state form. The lowest and responsible bidder, um, did take that form and complete it. Um, the request from Rove was to rebid this item based off of the form not being part of the bid package. Uh, I reviewed this with staff and did not find that the failure to have that attachment with the bid package, uh, rendered the, the bid improper. Staff also spoke with, um, the Department of Transportation, they provided the same advice. So, um, my advice is that you can proceed today with an award if you see fit. Um, you can also take the action to have staff rebid this if you so chose.
Pleasure to count.
Be, well, if I may, with me, if our attorney says it's okay, if Department of Transportation says it's okay, I mean, I would say follow through, but I do have a couple of questions on this, if I may. I know that, uh, if it gets approved today, um, what's our timeline?
Um, this is a ninety day project, so we will notify, um, the contractor, um, as soon as, tomorrow, and then he will have to provide all the documentations within ten days, and then we'll issue a notice to proceed. Um, at that time, we can give you an update as to when the project's gonna start and, and give you exact timeline, but it's a ninety, uh, ninety day project.
My, my concern here now is, uh, the fair is in March.
Yes, we've been in contact with, with the fair, um, we're working closely with them, um, if that's the case, um, we, we're, we're planning ahead, um, of the game.
What do we, about railroad, are we working with railroad on that?
Um, no, we're not.
We tried.
Sorry, though that was a loaded question, but, uh.
We tried, but not.
Correct, no, I know we've gotta try. Um, the, I do see all the thermoplasting, hydrants, catch basins and all that good stuff, what about signage?
Um, what type of signage?
Like speed limits, turn signals, stop signs, all that stuff that we have, we're gonna go in there. I'd rather take care of this now than come back later and look at it during a traffic issue.
Uh, that was something that it was not part of the sign, but that's something that we can, we can take a look at and if, if needed, uh, we can ask, we can come back with a, a change order, um, to add some to the contract.
If I can ask a clarifying question, Councilman Oparano, were you meaning additional mitigation measures than what's already in existence and then that should be replaced? Or?
Yeah, just, i- if there's, if we have no parking signs that are there or were there, are we gonna add those, are we gonna paint the curves right now that we're starting the project? Uh, stuff like that, that we don't have to come back and re-address it later, we can take care of it right now while we have it all shut down.
No, the, the no parking signs were not included as part of this project.
Prime example, the entrance to the fair, there's only a stop sign at, what is that, uh, J? On J Street, there's a stop sign, Second Street goes through, but the other side on, on the fairgrounds, they have their own stop sign, I, you know, if we ever plan to put something there, make it a four-way stop, I think this would be the ideal time to do that. I'm not saying we're gonna do that, but I mean, if we're gonna look at that, um, right now is the perfect time to start looking at traffic mitigation.
Uh, we can take a.
So, um, those would be my questions, but.
Aren't, are those services though, uh, don't we do those in-house?
Yeah, correct, but I, I, no, correct, we do those in-house and I think that would be something that while it's being worked on, we can work that in-house so that we don't have to go back later and take care of it at a later day, we can actually do it now. Kinda like what we're doing at, at, uh, um, Brewer and what's out of the street? Mirador, correct, we're going back, cutting sidewalks so we can put that stuff. You know, if we look at it and, and ahead of time, we can take care of that now and not cost us more money down the road. I'd rather pay, say, five thousand dollars now than ten thousand dollars later. I'm just looking ahead. Oh, that's, I'm good. I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Oh, actually, Jane's, Jane's made that.
Okay, so I have a, uh, motion from Tucker and a second from Alperano. Roll call please.
Mayor Eugenio?
Yes.
Councilmember Alperano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnworth?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dale?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion for the.
Someone.
I have a motion, Alperano, a second from Burnworth, roll call please.
Councilmember Alperano?
Yeah.
C- Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Eugenio?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnworth?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dale?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Moving on to E five, um, Imperial Public Library Board of Trustees.
Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, um, and, uh, mayor, Madam Mayor online, uh, before you, um, we have concluded our, um, application solicitation for the Imperial Public Library Board of Trustees. Um, as you were informed before, uh, we did have a solicitation period which we extended, uh, by another month. In that time, we received six total applications, uh, five of the six that were received, um, are completed and verified with the registrar of voters. Uh, the sixth individual, um, did receive some information as to how to complete. Unfortunately, it was not received within the timeline, but that is before you, uh, should you want more information or consideration. I will stand for any questions that you have. It would be our hope, um, for each of you to make your appointments from what is in front of you, um, or we can continue solicitation. I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
You have any of the applicants here?
No, we do not. Okay.
I would appoint.
So we go, each one of us.
So each, so what would occur here is in front of you or, or, or online, you do have the, the names, each one of you would select one of the candidates on here and that would be your appointment, that appointment would be tied to your term, um, and, and we would move forward appropriately with that selection. And we will need a, we can take it as one vote?
That, that's fine.
Since there's five current that are good, I just make a motion that.
Approve those five.
We just gotta pick a name, right?
Well, we each have to pick one, cause they gotta be on a term, so.
So is that your second?
We, we can't, we can do that and if it's, if it's the, the motion, as I understand it, Councilman Tucker, is that those five that are verified with the, with the registrar of voters and have completed the application, you nominate as the board, we will tie the names to your terms.
Yeah, and do we need to announce the name now, which one of, that where you can get it recorded or?
Yes, please.
My motion, well, I'm, I'm, Ramiro Ramos.
Okay.
Magdalena.
Okay.
Richard Brown, Montenegro, uh, Richard Montenegro Brown.
Madam Mayor, do you, uh, have a appointee or nomination?
Yes, Katie, did you select Magdalena?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go with, um, Rachel Alexis Blackwood.
Sanchez, so, okay, so I have a motion from Tucker and a second from Alperano. Uh, roll call please.
Mayor Eugenio?
Yes.
Councilmember Alperano?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dale?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, we're moving on to E six, amendment to ordinance seven ninety-five.
Yes, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, Madam Mayor and public, um, as requested by, uh, the city council to review our current, current ordinance, number seven nine five, uh, relating to cannabis for medical and adult use within the city of Imperial. Um, myself, um, City Manager Marita and City Attorney Holbrook did, uh, meet and review our current ordinance structure as to how the potential amendment for exclusive cultivation and manufacturing would, uh, take place, um, and what process would be needed. Um, so just to kinda give you a, a highlight version, uh, being that our ordinance is written that it would cause an amendment to that ordinance, uh, you would need to go through the public hearing process, um, that would evolve with the public notices through the Planning Commission and then to the city council. From there, um, that amendment, uh, should the council desire to go that route, uh, we would look at expanding the amount of permits, but in that expansion, it would only be exclusive to cultivation, manufacturing. Uh, we would not expand or increase the amount of permits to include any kind of retail, delivery, dispensary. Um, your current structure is there is one all-inclusive permit currently awarded to a business within the city that takes into account all seven categories, um, allowed by the State of California Bureau, Bureau of Cannabis Control. Um, the expansion of that permit, um, or the amount of those permits, we would do so to only allow for the two categories of those seven that I just stated and I will stand for any other questions that you may have.
It's just a matter of, um, of some that are wanting to extract oils for C B D and from, from cannabis, so it was just something that had been brought up to consider, so.
I would just make a point that in our ordinance, it is specific to zoning and locations. Um, I would not recommend any changes to those, uh, just because it will stay away from the sensitive zones as identified by the Bureau of Cannabis Control. Um, so that is an area that I would say should, should stay as is.
Or do I, anyone wanna entertain, uh, motion?
They're looking for some direction.
Direction.
Oh, it is only, okay, that's right, okay. Okay, well. I had a Brandon moment, all right. Let's go to successor agency to the former redevelopment agency.
Just to, to be clear, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Dale, the direction is for staff to proceed with the amendment process and begin the public hearing process of that, okay? Thank you, I just wanna clarify.
I was kinda waiting for that.
Uh, again, I'll go back to what I said, but fire away, it's been a long day.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and Council, with respect to item, uh, F one, uh, the city, city attorney will be presenting that item. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and, and council, the, uh, successor agency for the city of Imperial owns approximately a hundred and forty-five point six acres of land located at the southwest corner of La Bursary and Larson Roads. It, it is the intent of the city to ultimately develop this property into park facilities. Uh, uh, part of that would, um, be shared or worked with, uh, the Imperial Unified School District. Um, since purchasing that property in two thousand nine, uh, the, this portion of property has been annexed into the city and during that time, the property has been farmed by C B M Ginning Company, Inc. And there's a proposed lease, uh, in your backup, which would formalize this arrangement and, uh, provide certain fixed terms in that lease, which includes, uh, an annual rent payment of forty-four thousand dollars, uh, which would be due in two equal installments, um, one upon signing of the lease and one six months in. Uh, there are certain other, uh, provisions which would allow for a right of first refusal to the extent allowed by law, um, should the city or successor agency decide to continue to lease or sell that property. Um, uh, before you, as a lease for your consideration for adoption, um, it's requested that should you move to approve the lease, that it be done so contingent on the execution of a settlement and release agreement between the proposed lessee and the city. Thank you.
Any questions? Comments?
I know it's a first.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Tucker and a second from Burnworth, uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Eugenio?
Yes.
Councilmember Alperano?
Yes.
Councilmember Burnworth?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dale?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
You know, I, I realized about, uh, you know, we're supposed to take that hat off and go into something else, but I just realized that the reason why every time I get in this situation, I don't wanna change hats because the damn thing was stolen from the state. I'm gonna put that on the record again, so I don't recognize redevelopment the way they do it, so, anyway. Um, reports, department reports, uh, anything, Mr. Manager?
I, I don't have anything to report specifically, I, 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 I believe the, uh, Chief Barrow may want to, uh, uh, pass along a reminder about, uh, an event that's happening this Saturday. Beyond that, I'm not aware that any department has any report.
I'll let Chief, uh, go over Saturday's event, that's fine with me. While everybody's passing on the chief, same. Jackie, I assume your life's good? Good, chief. Chief, fire away.
Mayor of City Council, uh, excuse me, this weekend, we having a law enforcement tournament, uh, for the fallen, uh, I C S O deputy, uh, that passed away. Uh, we do have a combination of law enforcement or Imperial P D and other departments. We do have a team going, our first game will be at nine o'clock in the morning. Uh, if you're out and about, please stop by, uh, support this cause, we really do appreciate it. Uh, our goal is to win one game and then after that, after that, we can do what we gotta do, but, uh, majority of, uh, like I said again, all of us on the team are from the city, we're excited. If things go right, maybe we'll do our, our semi every three years, uh, city tournament. Uh, Jackie's crew is, uh, the reigning champions right now, but that's gonna be taken away this year, cause Jackie said he's gonna play this year, so. Uh, also too, just a, a reminder, it is no shave November. Uh, if you see the police officers, they are growing their beards and, and for, again, for no shave November. Uh, quick note, uh, I just wanna say that, uh, I'm very extremely, extremely, extremely proud of my, my partners in the last couple, especially the last couple of weeks. There's been some incidences here in the, in Imperial where we're not used to handling, but they, they, uh, they grabbed the bull by the horns and they ran with it. I'm, uh, very proud of every single officer that was part of those, uh, some of these incidences. I especially, I wanna say thank you to the detectives that are working on these cases, I really do appreciate it. And last but not least, I wanna say, uh, an extra thank you to the families of these officers. Uh, these officers were working overtime, they would be out, uh, working long, long hours, go back home, sleep for a couple of hours and then come back and finish up with the, they, they did what they had to do and I especially, again, I wanna especially thank their families, uh, their spouses, their kids. In one instance, uh, one of the, one of my partners, their dog, who hasn't seen them in a while, but again, uh, these officers are doing more than what we're used to, you know, for the city of Imperial and I'm, again, extremely proud of them, I'm proud to be their chief and for them to be working for the city, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holbrook?
No report, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Alperano?
Um, yeah, I got a couple of things, um, and I think I talked to you about this on Sunday, Saturday, where kids were out trick or treating. Um, it was nice to see our police department running around, you know, playing Halloween music, uh, being out there, making sure everybody was safe. Um, there's a new, a couple new, well, new resident that's in the city of Imperial, just recently got here and he says, he just had the best time in his, his head, that, uh, he left a bowl of candy outside in the yard and went inside and thought it was gonna be gone and came back a little while later, the candy was still there. He says, where he came from, that would never happen, but, uh, I said, it's Imperial, we're a little different, you know? Imperial's a great place to be and that, he says, you know, I, I'd like that, but yeah, thank you for the officers that were out there helping that day, um, it was nice to see that and, and I think we talked about that. Um, so the other part I do wanna say is I, I will apologize in advance, I will not be able to make that game this Saturday and I had pre-scheduled the event that I had to be at, so maybe next time, uh, I can do that. Um, with that, uh, I'll save my questions for later, but, uh, thank you to staff for everything you guys do, you guys, uh, rock and you guys are the reason why, uh, the city of Imperial is the way we are, number one, thank you.
Not tonight. Mayor Eugenio? Voices from the heavens. There we go.
Hi, hi everyone, um, sorry I couldn't be there tonight, my daughter Spencer and I have a cold and, uh, Alexis, that's what I, uh, said, we, uh, Alexis, Alexis asked that I keep my germs to myself, so, um, I just wanted to, uh, thank everyone for their hard work and efforts for the, um, the Yes Los Muertos Market Days. Um, special thank you to Amber Haller and her crew, Tony Lopez, his crew, and Jackie Lopren, his crew. Um, it was a great success and we're really looking forward to December festivities for the Christmas in a small town and the parade. Um, I also wanted to add upon what the chief said with, um, no shave November, I have my bright nails that I hoped to show tonight, but they are, uh, Spencer does not, but, um, so if you are a woman and, uh, clearly are not going to participate in the facial hair part of it, then do the bright nails. Um, I was looking for the link, um, online, um, to donate along with the bright nails with no shaving, which I couldn't find, um, Alexis where, or chief, where, where can people find that?
Uh, it, it should be on our website, we'll, we'll double check and make sure that gets up, thank you for, for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, thank you, um, and, uh, wait, sorry, Spencer. Um, and the last thing is I will try to attend the softball tournament, assuming this cold is gone, if not, then, uh, best of luck to all of you, have a great game. Uh, thank you Mayor Pro Tem Dale for filling in and everyone for being there, have a good and safe night.
Well, I'm gonna go along with what Robert had to say, it was such a really good sight to see the kids enjoy the police officers going around, around our neighborhood, we, I think we had two officers going at one time that went by, it's kinda cool with all the lights and the sirens and interactions with families and, and it was fantastic to see so many people out enjoying themselves and families, it was just, it was really neat. Saw some really creative, um, outfits that some of these kids were wearing, uh, some of them had some really big imagi- Uh, some of them had some really big imaginations, but that was kinda cool. Um, and also just Market Day staff, you guys, it's just amazing, uh, what we have and I, there's, it's gonna be awful hard to try to replicate something like this in some other town because this, this town has a synergy about it, uh, I call it an aura too, that it just, it's good people and they make, they make the event, the event. Um, it's just, it's just amazing how many people were here. I keep saying ten, people keep saying six thousand. I've never seen parking to where it's clear to Fourth Street, all the way to F Street, from F Street, clear to Sixth or to Berione, and then that was parking. It was literally every place you could put a car, there was a car. And that is amazing. I've never seen that in Imperial, and I understand that a lot of this is due to the fact that COVID. Um, frankly, people are tired, they're done, they're wanting to get out and do things with their family. And it really showed the other night. The, um, kudos to whoever booked the band. They were incredible. Um, so I really look forward to, um, Christmas in a small town and our parade. I really look forward to all that. I think this is gonna be an exceptional year and something that people have been looking forward to for way too long, so. With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting to, until the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, November seventeenth at seven PM.